Hello.
Good morning.
Good morning.
It is probably gonna be pretty short.
Yeah. Pull up the agenda.
I just added something.
Thank you.
Okay.
We can get started, I mean, we're already five in. You're muted.
Was our PR merged?
Was it?
See.
I know I haven't done my actions.
No.
You gotta fix this, I mean.
Yeah, or maybe don't worry about it and it'll be fixed when we, when it gets merged. We have all the approvals we need, I think it's just, were there any changes?
Can you show the, what you're looking at?
Oh, sure. So incubating stage.
Okay. That is a reminder for myself today.
I, I can probably just make these changes in a batch when I think about it. And then, I don't know if you need to pull these changes back into your branch, or. There are no more. Yeah. Okay, so all of, yeah, whatever changes I have are in there. Do we want to add a link to our roadmap in here?
We should.
Yeah.
Let me see, cuz I did on another machine.
Right then, we probably already changed this GitHub right, um, to bear.
Okay, so, I. I'll check this one cuz I know Kehio should have work on this. On the GitHub, but. I'll check who should we work on the. GitHub now.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, because I, I remember seeing some.
Updates on it.
Yeah, some messages in Slack about it, but I. I should just.
It's been a while.
Yeah. Yeah. Can we just go and see?
So many tabs.
So this exists? Ah, so this was actually changed already.
Yay. Alright.
And then, yeah, the Readme needed some updates, but, I think that's fine. Yeah, maybe we can do one more search through this repo and see if it still says DEI in a few places.
And update that in this. Project.
Yeah.
You're looking at four, four, three, okay?
Yeah, four, four, three.
I have a cat in the way, so I kinda have to.
Just keeping your keyboard warm. Yeah. I think this is all we needed, um, and in terms of. Funding, I think. That is going through, I haven't heard back from. From Naomi about. Take some notes real quick. As far as the mentorship goes. I think we're supposed to be getting the. Like project descriptions. This week or next week, but I, I've not had time to just go and remind people.
Okay, do we have a channel? I thought we had a channel for that.
Yes, it is channel OpenSSF Mentorship.
Okay.
So I can post the link and.
To, I'm trying to get our roadmap GitHub. OSS, the bear, where is the bear? WG Bear. It's like the best name.
Yeah, I, you should get t-shirts and.
Okay. Find the E I, there we go. Okay, review and commit. Updating from the I two bear. Sign off. Turn to pull requests. Okay, I just made some changes. All checks failed, the Deco was the one that failed. Oh, because we need a sign. I gotta fix my. Oh, it's about to paw, that's why it's so dark. It did nothing, but okay. I gotta fix my signature, I'll do that now. Yeah, so I updated it to remove anything that said DEI to bear.
Okay. Awesome. And then, yeah, everything else should be.
Should be, besides the signing, but I have the, I have all my. My token, my keys set up. I think it's just when I commit it.
Yeah. Yeah, that looks fine to me, I think we can probably merge. I'll even rename. This PR to just bear.
We gotta update. The roadmap has DEI. I think some of our directories need to be, our files need to be updated.
Okay.
Some, most of them have been changed, but like roadmap. Still says DEI. That's the only one.
We can have that. What's this? This is the incubating. Location. Yes, like leftover. To juice.
I'll make it a couple of. I meant to do, um, do we have to wait for the TAC to merge that?
I can probably just merge it.
Okay.
Wait, there's a, we do one more tiny thing. Because here. Yeah, we, I, I can merge it and then. Okay. Well, yeah, I think, were there any, let me see if there are any outstanding questions from TAC people? I'm going to have. Or share review it one more time cuz you had some open. Yeah.
Oh, I don't know where that dot came from.
Oh. It's fine. I, I type in all sorts of like random characters.
I think it was like the GitHub like editor cuz I was just typing or press enter. I did the thing and I added a dot after the first and I was like, I erased it, but it just wants to add dots to things, but it's fine.
Yeah.
Yay, rain.
Oh yeah, it's been pouring here too.
Nice, it hasn't rained in like months here, so like my grass is all sand right now.
Oh, yeah.
My plants are all dried up, I'm like, I need rain cuz watering of plants every day is. It's so tacky.
Yeah, same here, same here. Okay, yesterday it was really pouring buckets, today at least, I don't know. We had super nice weather, um, but I guess here in Oregon, the seasons are like flipped. From Florida, so summer is dry and winter is wet. So, the yellow grass is coming for us.
Yellow grass.
Yeah. Yeah, and then it just comes back next year, but, yeah, um.
Yeah, during winter we have yellow grass cuz it doesn't rain. And then it's still hot, so it doesn't make a difference. Let me put this as a star. Okay, send that March twenty fourth, I'm gonna do a bump on this thread.
I'm also pinging this guy. Since he, he had some comments. We need five approvals. Yeah, so if, if he approves, then I think he'll merge it today. Yeah, so, I guess. What is next? Um, yeah, like I said, the mentorship, I need to check. I think I'll share really quickly with you. Project details that I wrote up. So. Um, right now it's just a timeline, but. I never put a date in here, that's really funny. April fourteen, um, so that's next Monday, I guess. We want to have project descriptions ready. And then, what I guess I need to discuss with Naomi is. We probably need to open the. Mentorships in the LFX tool. So. But then, actually, do you know if Naomi is going to handle all of that, or if you and some other people will be also. Having access to that.
Yeah, did you mean for the mentorship? Sorry, I missed it.
Yeah, for the mentorship, yeah.
Mentorship, yeah, um, everything should go to Naomi and, um, but if there's anything that you want me to check with her. I can, I can do that as well.
Okay, yeah, thank you, then, yeah, I can just, um, send her a message again and. Make sure that we're on the same page.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you, so, uh. I think we still have. Our five students.
Or projects, not students.
Or projects, yeah, you're right, um, our five projects. Um, so now Cairo, he was going to do four, he said. And somebody else had asked.
I see J Duck.
J Duck had asked, yeah, so I sent him a message and because I honestly didn't recognize the name. And he was trying to do Linux kernel. Security, so I said, or Linux kernel maybe in general. And I said, okay, um, you might want to go through the Linux kernel themselves because they probably have their own mentorships. And so, that's, I, I think that's the path he went. Um, thank you for sending this.
Yeah, separated out. The dates, bold the dates I've been told.
Yeah. That's good. Yeah, so hopefully, we get some better discussions. Here, once the mentorship is actually going. Um, one of the things that Cairo had suggested is that we do like a mentor onboarding.
Call.
Call. So that we can, I don't know, maybe just. Yeah, a level set a little.
Do we have that in that timeline sheet that you had?
Oh, we don't, so we can add that. When does it make sense? So does it make sense? Before the application reviews start, maybe?
I think so, that way we might, we might come up with changes for the program description.
Yeah.
So it would be next week, next two weeks?
Oh wait, so you want before the, before the applications? Yeah, because that's another option. Um, I guess we could all together review each other's applications. Um, I like that idea a lot, actually.
But that, that would have to be next week.
It has to be next week, yeah.
Unless we do the next bear meeting. But even then.
Yeah, in two weeks. That could work, um, I expect we'll be spending that meeting just preparing the office hours, because the office hours are that week.
Do we know what we're doing for office hours? I'm gonna add that as conversation for.
For right now. Yeah.
And that is April. I'm ahead.
The office hours, they're on the twenty fourth.
We'll get to that.
Yeah, we may be reaching the ends of our plans. Yeah, and we can also move this like roadmap review thingy like down, but.
Uh, next week or leverage next air call?
Yeah.
I think we, we can put that on the Slack, where did I have Slack? There you go.
Yeah.
Uh, so we are planning a call with the mentors. Discuss project. Level of set expectation. And finalize the project description.
I'd say it's next Thursday seventeen.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm just gonna say next Thursday tentatively and then. Give people like a buffer time to finish their.
Next Thursday for the project description or for the review?
For the review.
Application goes live. We are aiming for next Thursday. Thursday, April seventeenth. Please let us know.
Somehow just refuses to write the date. I'm just gonna type it in on the stack. So, yeah. Hopefully they can join.
If not, we'll just draft some, some documents, have it recorded and.
Yeah, yeah, we can have it recorded and. Um, we can discuss during this meeting also just. Kind of how to review these applications. I know Cairo is, he has quite a bit of experience with reviews, but. I don't know how the other two are. I think the other two project is going to be like co-mentored, so.
Yeah, but it would be a good time for them to ask his questions and things like that.
Yeah, and so just like meet each other too, we're kind of hoping that mentors can like, I don't know. Like exchange ideas and stuff too.
Making friends.
Yeah, I didn't wanna say it, but. They can socialize a little. Yeah, so I guess maybe. Um, as part of this roadmap review, I actually wanted to discuss like, um, next steps for the mentorship panel.
Which one?
The one that, um, the OpenSSF one that was not accepted. Do we want to resubmit that somewhere? Do we want to see if we can get like a. Lunch room to do that?
At OpenSSF N, NA?
Yeah.
There's also Community Day, I thought. I don't know if it expired already, but I thought, uh, C, CP, CFPs were open.
CFP is open, I think for NA is closed, but.
Community Day?
Yeah, the Community Day, NA, sorry, that's what I meant.
Oh yeah, March twenty third.
Like, I don't know what happened with, um. The O, Open Source Summit, but there were so many, I don't know, I know a lot of people that just had. Talks rejected.
Interesting.
Panels, and there's no security track, so I don't know.
There's no security tracks?
There was no security track for the Open Source Summit.
Oh, interesting.
We got rid of it, um, I don't know what's going on. So, there's, um, OpenSSF Community Day, Japan, India and Europe are open.
I really wanna go to Japan, but I don't know who's gonna sponsor that.
Yeah, Japan in June must actually be nice. Yeah.
What were you gonna say?
I said same, yeah, Japan is not a bad idea.
Do you get to travel through, just through some staff? I mean, do, do staff all travel, or only a few?
Only, only a few. Yeah. Not in my case.
We'll figure it out, we'll figure it out.
Yeah, I, I did hear, I think from Crowe, maybe I'm making this up, but I think he said there is something about. Potential travel scholarships from OpenSSF. So.
I know LF has, cuz I just submitted mine this morning. Uh, but I did it for. Uh, Denver, and they only do one a year, so I was like, okay. Um, and then it, like Japan's in June and everything that I have is in June, I have three things in June, and I'm like, y'all need to stop. Choose another month.
Everything is in June. Um, yeah, Denver is also in June. Uh, what else is in June, I guess?
I think CubeCon was also in June.
Oh god. And, uh, they just did the MAFs back. Wait, CubeCon EU just happened, but I guess CubeCon.
Oh yeah, no, that one's in November, nevermind, that's in Georgia.
Okay.
That's the other one I wanna go to. We can target that one.
Yeah, we could.
The end of hurricane season, so we're good. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so. Um, this could be for CubeCon.
Okay. Oh, because, or we can try to do another Grace Hopper, but yeah, I don't know. I would like to get a Grace Hopper in person one of these days.
Oh yeah, that's another one.
It's also in November.
That one's nice cuz that one's in Philly. It was November twenty.
Oh, it's in Chicago this year.
Really?
Yeah.
Ah, nice.
It is the Chicago.
I remember putting in on this.
The Chicago Convention Center, cuz that's where CubeCon was a few years ago. It's enormous.
They haven't. They don't have call for papers yet. But. They don't have call for papers yet, but. And then CubeCon. CubeCon. This would be November, I think tenth to thirteenth?
Yo. And Rose Hopper was the week before.
Yeah, so we would go from Chicago to Atlanta. I'm okay with it.
Yeah, Chicago is actually not too bad in November when I went uh, two years ago.
I went years ago uh, in Halloween time, so it was just about. November, it was still cold for me, but it's okay.
Oh, yeah, no, it's, it's freaking cold, it's uh.
Um, I think there's also Diana Initiative. I don't know if there's CFPs still open. Oh, there it is.
And I remember the. Tapia Conference. But is that something we can submit to?
Which one?
The Tapia Conference?
I haven't heard of that one.
People in, like, it was in grad school, people were going. Let me share in the chat here. Oh, call for participation? How does that work? No. It's closed.
No, we need a list.
Yeah, we do need a list. Panels and workshops, yeah, we could have submitted something here.
Okay. Ten to the twelve. Actually, I think I have a list that somebody created of different conferences, but they're security focused, not really open sourced.
Yeah, or diversity focused in this case, I guess.
Yeah, so there's C F, Diane Initiative, CFP is open.
Okay.
Um, I submitted a CFP there, so uh, I think this one is open. And this one, CFP T B D. I think CubeCon.
Yeah, CubeCon could be. Good, let's see. I'm back to CubeCon.
Submit to speak, yeah, May twenty seventh.
And do they have their tracks announced? Let's see, suggest attracts, um.
AI application native connectivity. Of security.
Yeah. But they don't actually have a diversity track this time. Um. We could potentially reach out though, um, to these chairs and just be like, hey. Will you have any events, any diversity launches this year?
Yeah, something we can do.
Yeah.
Um, for North America. We'll think about that one. Uh, anything else was top of mind for the roadmap for this quarter?
The roadmap, I guess I wanted to, uh, I have too many tabs up and. I don't know, I don't know how people do it with their like one hundred tabs, like at the. Like, I get overwhelmed on like fifteen sometimes, um.
On my work laptop, I use Edge and Edge likes to like group them. And then let's make like workspaces out of them, so you group them and then you make a workspace and close that workspace. That's been a, a deal breaker for me, which I hated Internet Explorer and I'm uh, like. Google, you need to step your things up so I can control all these tabs that I have.
Yeah, I Safari on, on Macs is doing something similar. Um, where you just have like your different browser profiles. I guess Chrome supports browser profiles, um, I can have like different ones, but you have to be logged in, which I don't always wanna do. Um.
Yeah. Yay, my ring is ready.
So. Top of the month, oh, welcome calls is something we wanted to do in Q one. Um, so that's still something we want to try, or do we wanna push that out for later in the year?
We can do one a quarter for right now. Target mid-May for the next one.
Yeah.
We can also even just use one of our community office hours for it, if anything.
Yeah, that's not bad.
As a pilot.
Or one of these group uh, calls.
Yeah, so, okay, let's, let's just pick an arbitrary date. Because that's what we do. Uh, not the first two weeks, cuz those are gonna be crazy for me. Uh.
You can do like nineteen or twenty six, oh, no.
The twentieth. And then when's our next community call? I don't see one in May for a community call.
Uh, twenty second of May.
Oh, I'm looking at April, why am I April? Thirteen. Okay, so the twentieth or the twenty second.
Yeah. Looks good. Um. Do we need to prepare anything for that? It just says new community members are given an overview of ongoing openness of initiatives. Um.
Well, we need to figure out what the ongoing initiatives are, so maybe if we ping. Um. Ping the other working groups. Or a status update. And auto action. So each working group could give us like, what are they working on and then where do they need help? Like if you were to send people to them.
Yeah, so, um. I'm gonna put this into the notes, the. Working groups. Nine working groups in, including bear, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can do this, yeah, maybe they can just submit, we can make like a slide deck and they just fill one slide.
I like that.
And then they can either come and present their own slide or we just read it.
Yeah. Let's add Dev, Devro to this cuz I don't see Devro on the.
Oh, yeah.
The.
Yeah, it's not a working group.
Uh, it's a community, it's a community meeting.
Yeah, yeah, they have their own office hours, cuz that, that's yet another option, actually, right? We could use the Devro office hour, see if they're uh, open to this, um.
When's their next one? Cuz we can just drop in there and be like, yo, what's up? Can we use your time?
The next one is, oh wait, third Thursday of every month, so, gosh.
That's, yeah.
March nineteen was their last one. We were just Thursday. So next Thursday.
That's too soon.
Yeah.
Next Thursday, we'll be doing the program call.
Yeah, well, we can at least maybe jump in. Um, because our office hours aren't until the week after, so. Um, I wouldn't mind just jumping into this Devro office hour and then just the, the next one.
Proposing it, yeah.
And proposing it, yeah, um.
He said next Thursday, no, this Thursday.
Uh, I think it's on the, you know what, there's the community calendar, what am I doing? Um.
Yeah, I see it on the tenth, eleven thirty.
The ten. Oh, what is? Community meeting, oh, I see, they have a community meeting, ah, I was looking at the office hours, which is on the seventeenth. Um. Either way. Yeah. Yeah, we can go to either one, um, and just see if we can propose this.
Yeah, this Thursday I won't be able to. Um.
Yeah. Or.
Forty, seven, eleven thirty.
Yeah, I don't think I can make this Thursday, actually.
And then. Next Thursday, oh, they have a thirty minute office hour.
Yeah, so this Thursday I can't make either. Um, but next week I could, but what, what I can also do is I can just message, um, Catherine directly. Um, cuz her and I just like I am each other sometimes, um, and I'll just ask her there if she's. If you can just go up to the office hours about this.
We can probably propose it to them on Slack too.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we, we have the welcome hours, alright, so I'm gonna put that one on you, so, uh. And then. We'll create.
Yeah, and we can probably also ping Jay because he's. Um, I think co-chair of like A I M L working group and supply chain integrity also. So, um, but I'm sure, yeah, yeah, um. I bet you, it would be good.
At least he'll know who to share it to.
Mm-hmm.
Alright. Um, open source, North America, I know we wanted to do like an in-person event.
Yeah, what's the, is the schedule out for that yet? Our friend's schedule. Oh, wow, so the schedule is up. Registration and breaks, yeah, could be. Ah, so. Let me share this real quick, um.
That was the wrong link.
So, um, I just posted the link to the schedule in the chat. Um, if you filter for breaks or registration of breaks, the like pink one. Um, there's one that still says T B A, so I don't know if we could potentially. Um, either take one of those breaks and, and just have like a special networking session or. Uh, yeah.
Yeah, that or we just uh, can do like a meetup if that doesn't work.
Yeah.
Cuz this one's Community Day, this isn't uh, the Open Source Summit, hold on.
Oh, yeah, um, that's also true. Yeah, I don't see any reason we couldn't just have our own, like, separate.
This is the schedule. And then. I don't see breaks.
Uh, special events exhibits and the end breaks.
There you go.
Why? Zenzone.
This is the first thing I saw, I was like, ooh.
Yeah.
Um, binary coffee. That's cool, tux truck, I have to go there.
Yeah, it's actually not super interesting, in my opinion. It's just like, it's just like open floor in the, well, I guess you can get a lot of like fun swag if that's what you want. But no one's like, I don't know, having fun, everyone's just standing around.
That's all conferences, though.
At least in CubeCon, they have like games during their, uh.
Their sessions.
During their, their like evening session, there's like a climbing wall and people were like driving around on. Uh, what are those things called? Segways? So, that was like a little more interesting, but. Um.
There's a, a ten-day reception, June twenty fifth, and I know GitHub, we might wanna partner with GitHub. They do, um. Open source maintainers events at these, like, meetups.
That, yeah. That would be cool. Uh, who's, it's, oh.
Papa, I'm in the middle of a meeting, I'm trying to drink my juice, ow. Damn nails. Let's see. Alright, we have options, GitHub, uh, North America. Opens for Summit.
There's also an entire equity and inclusion. Um.
That is very soft. Uh, we can just reach out to the, maybe the program committee and then worst cases, we'll just do one of those like meetups, we'll find somewhere near. And then just set up a meetup.
I think we can do that.
Yeah. The action there will be to contact. Program committee. And or find location for you need a. Alright. Uh, we got ten minutes left, uh, office hours.
Okay, yeah, uh, let's see. Working group there. I'm just pulling up the.
The calendar.
Office hours schedule. Okay, so I had written, um.
I think imposter syndrome?
Yeah, we could do imposter syndrome alone, I had like a celebrating women one, but we can move that, um.
Oh, yeah, cuz March was women's history.
Yeah.
I like to celebrate women, but that's because I'm biased.
It's also not that hard, in my opinion, to like get organized, because.
Yeah.
Um, a lot of the questions like overlap with some of the other ones.
Yeah, it's, we can use pretty much the same ones that we did in like Black History Month.
And neurodiversity and, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Um. Yeah, so I think that's, uh, like.
I like that one. Alright, that one. Because we can do Catherine.
You know, Catherine, uh, I would like to invite some of the PMs as well, like Angela and, um.
Yeah, the behind the scene folks.
Yeah.
Naomi. Um.
I think Sally and Angela are always like really there.
Yeah. Um. We also have in the community. Uh, where are the other ones? I see their faces. Their names are like the tip of my tongue. Uh, Emily Fox, I think.
Oh, yeah, Emily would be great to invite. And then, um. We have.
We could just do a call out in general too.
Yeah.
If anybody wants to highlight, um, we have a few folks from the podcast guest that we can invite, um, so Tamatha.
Yeah.
Uh, Milan is another one. But the list is on the list.
Yeah, we can invite Ijoma, of course, also, um.
Joma.
And.
Uh, Vic. Vicki would be one too.
Yeah.
I just look at our list.
It's long.
Yeah.
Um, there's this other lady that joined, um. She, she joined one of the kind of previous discussions. Um. Is her name Karen? Maybe I just need to go back. I think it's the past year.
Oh, we have Stacy. Stacy Porter. She's a new member of, um.
Oh, yes. Well, it's definitely Stacy. I'm thinking, um, Lori LaRusso was a speaker last year. Um.
Lori, what did you say, LaRusso? Let's put L.
That's good. I think we'll know who you mean. And then, um.
I see Kate, Kate Powell. Looks like a PM from LF. Yeah, it could literally just be a woman's call. Not an allies, women and allies.
Oh, how could we forget Adrian? She's Chief of Staff. If this, if she's around, we should invite Adrian too. Um.
Okay.
I'm checking all the people. Oh, yeah. Kate Powell and.
I just went into general. I was like, let's see.
Yeah, same.
Women, history and allies, because we can't forget our allies.
Yeah.
Alright, buddy. I know. Thank you. Okay, um. I'll do a message on general. I'll do this now.
Yeah, I think that's good. And then maybe for some of the later ones, uh, like I was thinking June is Pride Month. Um.
We can do the LGBT community.
I really want to do like a Pride Month one. Um, I don't know about May. Uh, because I think May is like another mental health awareness.
Yeah, may, maybe we can do, um, imposter syndrome. Pride Month.
Okay, I'm gonna write that down right now. Overcoming your imposter syndrome.
LGBT. U B?
LGBT.
I have it in the notes.
Oh, um.
I'm sure the order doesn't matter, but.
Yeah.
Yay.
I, yeah, I actually have some people that we can invite there also.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's awesome. Um, we copy that over. Plus, um. I'm just gonna keep putting celebrating in front of everything. I'm very not creative. It's like, huh.
We tweak it. We tweak it.
Yeah, I know, it's, for now, I just wanna have it in there. Um, cool, so we have like the next replanned, um, or at least like I have a theme. Um, and then eventually, I think, um, there's like more heritage months, like September. Hispanic Heritage Month, then we have the Native American. There's also like Pacific Islander, Asian. There's, I don't wanna forget that either. Um. Which one's like Asian Heritage Month? Oh, that's in May. So we could also do that in May, actually. Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. I don't know what you prefer.
Islander. Um.
I do feel like we talk about imposter syndrome like pretty often, so.
In all of them, like that's just a, because that could be a question. I like the, I like the idea of highlighting different folks in the community.
Yeah.
Um. Because I'm sure folks would be happy to be like, yeah, I'll, I'll join the Asian one or I'll join the woman one or the LGBTQ one. Um. Maybe I'll do a form for this and just feel like, which one do you wanna speak in? Do you wanna do the woman? Do you wanna do the Asian?
Oh, yeah.
And that way we just get everybody at once.
Yeah.
Like these are the months, intensive dates.
See, do you have access to this form? You should, um.
I know Yoma did it.
Um. And then, yeah, we just need to add the dates. I don't see any dates on here. Oh. Uh. The old, the old ones are in here, the planned topics.
Okay, I can, I requested edit access. Let's see if I can edit. And let me message her. Thank you for joining. Alright.
Yeah.
Or she. Aijoma, and then I'll put you.
Um, are you trying to access with your Microsoft?
Uh, no, my, my personal Google.
Oh, because yes, is that the yes to tech one?
Yeah, yes to tech, yes to tech dot SRV. Or is it yes to tech, or is it yes to tech dot org?
I see dot org, I see dot org in here, but.
Okay.
Um, it says you have edit access with that one.
I have so many emails, hold on. Uh, kitty.
I also do. It's. Oh, I need this address for this one specific thing. And then now I have like, yeah, ten different addresses. Um.
Yeah, the yes to tech dot org is my LLC.
Oh.
Account.
Um, should we add another one then?
No, that's fine. I just gotta do it now on my computer, on my, my personal laptop. Switch accounts. Cool. And let me see if this works. Uh, just says, it's still request edit access. Okay. Oh, there it is. Okay, got it. I'll edit this. And then I'll send it out.
Yeah, so I guess the three are, are they getting Asian American and Pacific? Well, women in April and then. Pacific. And. Islander. Um. Okay, uh, yeah, and then we have the LGBTQ one in June. I think we're pretty much set. This is nice. Hopefully someone can actually. Someone, hopefully people reply to this.
Yeah.
Because I feel like Ijoma sent it out and then we only got one response, I see in here. Um. So for next time, I think, yeah, I have my action items.
Yeah, I have mine. I'll write it down. I'll send that out to the general today, once I tweak. Once I tweak it and then get that going. Get that moving and then I'll write down my actions. I gotta fix my SSL key too. Or my GitHub key for signing.
Well, I think he's approved it yet. Um.
Perfect.
Oh. The file still says DEI.
Which one?
The actual, just like file, um, says is named DEI. But I think even in this tac repo, we probably need to replace DEI in a few other places. So I can just, yeah, I can submit a separate pull request for that.
Okay. I don't know.
Yeah, we need to update a bunch of places. Uh, let's still say DEI in there. That's fine. Um.
We'll find it for years to come. It's okay.
Yeah.
Alright, I gotta drop now.
Yeah, same.
Thank you and we'll be in touch.
Thank you too, yeah. See you soon. Bye.